Order the Board of Commissioners meeting for January 11, 2024. If we could rise, note the presence of all three board members. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
Great. Well, thanks, everyone, for being here. This is our first official Board of Commissioners meeting. And I want to start out by thanking everyone for coming out to our swearing in. Last week, it feels like it was forever ago, but we had approximately 650 people that attended our swearing in. And I am beyond grateful for the support of our community. And it's a tremendous honor to serve Montgomery County. We are collectively a very historic Board of Commissioners. And it's really an honor to serve with Commissioner DeBello, Commissioner Mckeisha. And I know each of us are looking forward to making a difference in our community. And as I said last week, it's our collective dedication to public service, along with our diverse perspectives and experiences, that will drive a collaborative leadership that is vital to our shared success as a Board and as a county. We are a diverse community, in which I'm so, so proud of that. And that is really one of our greatest strengths. In these meetings, we will all, leaders and residents alike, be able to express and celebrate our distinct values and ideas. And to do that, we must embrace civility, respect the dignity of our neighbors, and speak with consideration of each other. And so we look forward to engaging all of you in a productive conversation during these Board meetings. Next, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of a pillar in our community. Charles J. Tornetta, known to many as Charlie, passed away last week on Wednesday, January 3rd. Charlie was a well-known and dedicated, well-renowned and dedicated his life and career to Montgomery County in so many ways. He served on the Montgomery County Planning Commission for more than 50 years, providing instrumental input on Montgomery County's first comprehensive plan in 1979, the year after I was born, the acquisition of 2,300 acres of land at the Green Lane Reservoir, which we all know now as the beautiful Green Lane Park, and a settlement for the preservation of the Narsetown Farm Park where I often walk our dog and my little guy Max. When Charlie retired from the Planning Commission in 2022, he was honored then by the County Board of Commissioners as the longest-serving volunteer member of any Board in Montgomery County's history. Everyone in Montgomery County has been impacted by the work that Charlie did over more than five decades, and his loss is a true loss to our community. On behalf of our Commissioners and the county, we offer our deepest condolences to his family. Next, I wanted to provide an update. This morning, Montgomery County health officials announced that they are tracking local potential exposures related to measles outbreak in Philadelphia. Currently, there are eight confirmed cases in Philadelphia, but no confirmed cases in Montgomery County. Our Department of Health and Human Services, our Public Health Department, will continue to monitor the situation and inform the public as things progress. Measles is a very contagious disease, and our public health professionals urge the public to take the potential exposure risk seriously. And so we've created a dedicated website to best inform the public about the ongoing situation. So you can visit montgomerycountypa.gov/measles, which will continue to be updated with the latest information. Measles is a preventable disease. People are immune to measles if they were born before 1957, have already had measles, or received two doses of the MMR vaccine. Those most at risk are those who have not been vaccinated, which can include vulnerable populations such as infants under 12 to 15 months, or those that are immunocompromised. Anyone who has been exposed should be contacted by our public health team and are encouraged to stay home for 21 days until they are no longer contagious. So I want to thank all of our public health professionals and to the residents of Montgomery County for taking the necessary steps to keep our communities safe. Next, I wanted to acknowledge and extend a sincere amount of gratitude to our county employees who helped prepare us as a Board of Commissioners and the county for Tuesday night's storm, and who were ready and responsive through the night as the storm progressed through our region, the members of our Department of Public Safety, assets and infrastructure, roads and bridges, and numerous others. Between 9:30 and 11:30 p.m. on Tuesday night, there were four water rescues, and I thank the teams responsible for carrying those out. We had flood warnings in effect for areas of Montgomery County bordering the Schuylkill River and Perkeomen Creek. Both waterways likely won't fall back to normal levels before the next rain event, which is forecasted to be tomorrow. Next, I will have a couple more things, so I'm sorry. Lot to talk about. Monday, January 15th, is Martin Luther King Day. It's also my mother's birthday, so proud that my mother shares the same birthday as Martin Luther King. And it's a moment to celebrate the civil rights icon whose acts of service continue to inspire us to this day. I would not be sitting here if it were not for Martin Luther King's advocacy during the civil rights movement, so I am grateful for him. Across the county, there are so many events and opportunities to participate in MLK Day of Service to give back to your communities that are happening throughout the weekend. I think there's some, there's a lot on the screen here. They range from Senior Empowerment Day in Lower Marion, a solidarity walk, solidarity walk and remembrance service at Wissahickon High School, cleanup events in Lansdale, Brenmar, Narsetown and Ambler, a blood drive in Upper Marlin, and activities for families and kids at the Ardmore Library and Salem Baptist Church in Abington. I encourage all residents to reflect on the meaning of MLK's life and legacy and use one of those events, where the many others happening in your area, as an opportunity to strengthen the ties to your community and neighborhood in the spirit of MLK. Lastly, we have our pick count for January 23. Finally, I want to remind everyone that 2024 point in time count will be held on Tuesday, January 23rd. This is the annual count of people experiencing homelessness. Your Way Home is looking for donations to take to the unhoused individuals as they do the count. The Lib experience advisory board has recommended several survival items that would be most useful for our unhoused during the count. The Your Way Home wish list is open until tomorrow, January 12th, and is linked from yourwayhome.org. The wish list includes basic items such as hand warmers, hats, socks, gloves, and hygiene items. Please take a look at it and donate if you can. And with that, I'll be quiet and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Mckeisha.
Thank you. It is an honor to be here in our first meeting, full meeting ever of 2024, and I just want to reiterate Commissioner Weiner's remarks in terms of swearing in, and I want to thank the staff for really pulling together a wonderful event that brought many of our county officials and leaders from across the whole county and here in the county seat in government, but really from every walk of life in terms of the people that we're going to work with and really rely upon to help best represent our communities. I just want to thank everyone who made that possible and who joined us. So I'll talk about this a little bit more on the election board, but one thing I've learned, that every Tuesday, there is an election somewhere. And this Tuesday, that election is in North Penn School District. So there will be a referendum on Tuesday, January 16th, on North Penn in regards, sorry, space for ninth grade students that is shifting on a number of other infrastructure needs. So if you live in North Penn, please know that polls are open, seven at 8:00 p.m. Tuesday. There is a drop box location at the Magisterial District Judge Office, 430 Penn Oak Caraway in Lansdale, and there's also one here at One More House in the lobby. We'll hear more about that during the election board. I was important to put that at the top of our meeting. To follow up on what Commissioner Weiner has said about homelessness, pick count, I think one of the things that I really appreciated about our swearing in is that all three of us, Commissioner DeBello as well, have agreed that this is an issue that we want to tackle collectively as a Board, and something that we heard repeatedly in the last year when we were meeting voters across the county. And there was a 37% decrease last year in the pick count, which is still at 350, but it was a great improvement over the 500-plus that it was previously. So we're looking forward to working with our team. And in particular, we're going to hear today soon from Dr. Williams, our Director of Department of Health and Human Services, and Kaylee Silver, our Administrator of HHS Housing and Community Development, to talk about some new programs, including a call center change that is going to give our residents an ability to address homelessness in a more immediate way, and make it easier to have folks who have the experience and the nuanced knowledge of how to tackle this crisis, and make sure that we're making those steps that we need to ensure that everyone in our community has a safe place to call home. So I'm excited for us to tackle that issue, which we have all spoken about for quite some time, and to really see the steps being taken by our fantastic staff. And just as a final note, I'd say this has been quite a week. There's a lot to learn, and I have just been blown away by the level of professionalism and dedication and just the expertise that I've seen in the staff that I've had the brief time to meet with. So I look forward to the weeks and months to come. It's going to take months at least just to get a sense of everything that is being done and worked on within the county, but I am very much energized by everyone that I've met, and just we'll look forward to more conversations and learning from each of you. So thank you.
Commissioner DeBello?
There's no time left.
I know. I know. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah. As mentioned, I mean, as being a new elected Commissioner and sworn in last week, I'm really excited to be here as well. It's a tremendous honor to be representing Montgomery County, all of Montgomery County and all the residents. I'm excited. There's a long list of things I hope to accomplish in my tenure here. 10 years, I should say, but not 10 years. But I'm really excited. I think I have an awesome team that I'll be working with. I think that we're all circled or centered on some key issues. As mentioned, we look like we will be hearing about the homeless. We all agree that this is something that we need to solve. We can't continue to go down this path of putting, you know, temporary solutions out there, which are extremely important, but let's work, let's work hard to find a solution that will solve the problem. You know, I think that the staff here has been unbelievable. Like was stated, we came in here, it's a fast turnover. I mean, you know, we had the outgoing Commissioners and then, you know, at least Commissioner Weiner is a little experienced. But, you know, we are kind of getting our feet wet, and there's a lot going on, there's a lot to learn. But the staff has been very supportive and right there for us, asking, answering a lot of questions that we may have or we come up with. Even this morning, I was trying to get my computer, you know, connected to Wi-Fi out here, and we ran into a slight problem, but the IT department was right here, ready to get us functioning and rolling, so I really appreciate that. I'm probably a little different because I come from a technology background, so I just carry, you know, I carry my notebook in here instead of all the paper and binders and all that, but we'll see how this goes. And as far as just wearing in, the staff that prepared and executed that did an unbelievable job, especially when we had to quickly change the venue because it was a sellout in the first venue. And so it was, they turned on a dime and got us prepared and ready to go in the new venue. And I really appreciate everyone that came out in support of us during the ceremony. I thought it was a great, great day. Everything went off without any issues.
That you knew of.
That we knew of.
That we knew of, that's true, that's true. We had some, we had some delegates from, you know, state and federal official positions that stopped in to see us, either stayed for the entire ceremony or stopped in and dropped off a coffee cart. But that was appreciated as well, to see that kind of support in the community. And, you know, so like I said, I have a long list of things that I hope to accomplish over this time that I'm here. I think that, I think the community is looking forward to, you know, us, the new Board coming in, they're looking, I mentioned this during my swearing in, that they're looking towards us to put this political division that we see out there, they're hoping that in Montgomery County that we don't, we don't see that moving forward. And my goal is to work, you know, alongside with my partners here. And I think that, I think that we're going to impress everyone in the county when they see us working together and not sitting here pushing, you know, political division. So I'm really excited about that. And the last thing, you know, everybody always talks about transparency in government, and, you know, what I've seen so far is coming into this role within the last week. I think Montgomery County does, does a really good job of being transparent as far as what's going on from a government standpoint. And I think that that's impressive, and I think that will continue, and I'm sure that anytime we're questioned about, that they may, people may think that we're not transparent, we'll be more than happy to provide any information that we have, and we'll demonstrate that we're completely transparent. So I think that's a great thing. I know one of the things I do, I do want to bring up that hopefully that we could address in one of our future meetings, and I talked about this, about the public comment period, right? I'd love for us to, I've sat on different boards over time, and I'm used to a public comment right at the beginning of a meeting for agenda items, and then I'm used to a public comment at the end of the meeting for, you know, basically whatever, whatever you'd like to discuss about county business. I think that's something that we could do, that I think the community would have really appreciate that. I'd love to see it go three minutes in the beginning and five minutes at the end. I'd say let's give it a try and see what happens. But that's something that I want to, I think that I want to put out there, and I think it's important that we consider it, and, and like I said, give it a try and see. I think we, I think we'd be surprised that people are going to be very excited that we provide that opportunity to them, and I don't think that it would be taken advantage of as well. So anyway, thank you very much. I look forward to everything that we're going to be doing over the next, at least, four years or more. So thank you again, and let's get on with the meeting. And there are seats in the front here if anybody wants to move.
Wait, wait a bite. So thank you for the suggestion, noted. And then I want to know why you weren't able to fix your Wi-Fi. If you're the IT guy, why did you need help?
I didn't want to step over anybody, you know, they jumped.
I'm kidding.
I know. That's right. You know, I just.
All right. Well, we'll get on with the meeting. So I'd like to invite Dr. Williams, our Director of Health and Human Services, and Kaylee Silver from the Office of Housing and Community up to give us an update on the Your Way Home call center change.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. Just want to say congratulations again, and really excited to be working with all of you. So good morning. I'm Dr. Tamara Williams. I'm the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services. I'm here with Kaylee Silver, who's the Administrator for Health and Human Services, Office of Housing and Development. And we're here to share some exciting changes of the way that we use the 211 phone number in Montgomery County. For those of you who are unfamiliar with 211, essentially, anyone who is in need of help with basic needs can call 211 and be connected to a variety of supports, including food, shelter, clothing, health, utilities, and transportation. And in Montgomery County, we have relied on 211 as an entry point for the coordination of housing supports. So essentially, any person's experiencing or at imminent risk of homelessness can call 211 to be connected to someone who's trained to assess housing and other needs. They'll also triage those who have the most dire needs, and also refer individuals or families to housing and other related resources. It's important to acknowledge that 211 is a national program that relies on local resources. However, from our perspective, there are few who have more knowledge of Montgomery County local resources than our navigates in the Office of Community Connections and our team in the Office of Housing and Community Development. And that knowledge is really critical to continuing to improve our ability to quickly help those in need of housing-related resources. So we're pleased to announce that we will be moving the calls for housing-coordinated entry services from 211 to the HHS Office of Community Connections. And in doing so, we'll be able to provide a more local, integrated, and holistic approach to helping those at risk of homelessness with more immediate access to all of the resources within the Department of Health and Human Services. This move also supports the success of our efforts to address housing and homelessness in the county through initiatives such as the Homelessness Task Force and the Homes for All Initiative, which includes the Your Way Home program. So I'll turn it over to Kaylee to provide some more details about the service and this exciting change.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Hello, Commissioner Weiner, Commissioner Mckeisha, Commissioner DeBello. It's great to be here. Next slide, please. So I am also very pleased to announce that effective February, fully effective February 1st, 2024, Your Way Home, which is Montgomery County's homeless crisis response system, will operate a new call center through Montgomery County's Department of Health and Human Services Office of Community Connections, as Dr. Williams mentioned. This change will provide more direct, local expertise and responses to calls from residents experiencing homelessness. Of note, there will be a soft launch to the new call center on January 15th, where 211 will still take those intake calls and perform coordinated entry, as well as this new helpline through Community Connections, which you see here up on the screen, of 610-278-3522. Coordinated entry targets services for our most vulnerable residents in Montgomery County experiencing homelessness, and prioritizes those who are actively experiencing homelessness, such as people who are sleeping outside, in a car, in a park, in an emergency shelter, people who are temporarily in a hotel paid for by a charitable or government organization because they have nowhere to go, as well as men, women, and children who are survivors of domestic violence and in need of housing for safety reasons. Coordinated entry also targets and prioritizes services for veterans experiencing homelessness, particularly veterans at imminent risk of experiencing homelessness. Next slide, please. Coordinated entry services through this new call center will be available Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Of note, behavioral health crisis services, such as 988, Montgomery County Mobile Crisis, as well as the Your Way Home Street Outreach Services, will continue to operate 24/7. These crisis services can offer immediate help in cases of emergency, and of course, 911 is always available should there ever be any need of immediate emergency assistance. The Your Way Home Street Outreach Services, which includes a 24/7 team, a veteran-specific outreach team, as well as a youth-specific outreach team, provide services out in the field where people are in order to ensure that they're connected to the housing and other resources needed for them as well. Coordinated entry itself is designed to provide intake assessment and referral to rental assistance programs that can assist people experiencing homelessness get back into safe, stable, and affordable housing, and then connect them with the supports, services, connections to benefits, jobs, and income they need in order to maintain that housing. These programs, such as Rapid Rehousing, provide short- to medium-term rental subsidies, housing location assistance, and case management services. Coordinated entry is essentially the door to these rapid rehousing programs. Next slide, please. So just want to make note, as you can see, Your Way Home has made great strides in implementing programs that combat and end homelessness. When people experiencing homelessness are provided intake and assessment and referral through coordinated entry, they are then prioritized for services based on need rather than first come and first served. This helps use our targeting of data and helps us towards our goal of making homelessness rare, brief, and one time only. So you'll see some accomplishments on the screen here that we have assisted through coordinated entry and Your Way Home programs over 9,000 households and over $112 million in emergency rent and utility assistance for people at risk of homelessness. Just in this past calendar year, we have, through Your Way Home Rapid Rehousing programs, have assisted 420 people exit homelessness to safe, stable, and permanent housing. And we see great success in that well over 80% of those households served through our housing programs do not return to homelessness. Next slide, please. So thank you again. We're really excited to be able to offer this really localized, streamlined, and direct responses to calls from residents in need. I want to make a special thanks to the Community Connection staff, the navigates, their leader, Elizabeth DiArcangelo, our project manager, Administrator Jim Walters, my deputy, Sunita Hiddink, as well, for all the training and implementation of this launch. For more information about the new call center, you can visit yourwayhome.org. You can also email yourwayhome@montgomerycountypa.gov. And of note, if you visit yourwayhome.org, we are currently distributing marketing materials. We have partnered with SEPTA as well to have some bus advertisements as well with the new call center, and I'll be leaving these here at OMP. And over the next month, we'll be providing these materials to police stations, libraries, community centers, and other resources throughout the county. But if anyone watching this, if their agency would like these materials, please visit yourwayhome.org, and there'll be a form to sign up, and we'll come out and give you these materials. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Well, great job to you and the team, and I know how complicated it can be to set up a call center operation, especially for such a difficult topic like this. So we look forward to inviting you back and giving us an update on how things are going. So all the best in launching this new call center. Any additional comments?
Just a quick question. You said there's going to be a soft start, and then, so 211, what happens with that after it's completely over to your call center? Is it, I mean, connected to you guys, or how's that work?
211 will still be online and available to Montgomery County residents to provide information and referral resources to food, shelter, Code Blue services, emergency services, 24/7 services, other basic needs and supports. That will continue to be a 24/7 information and referral resource to Montgomery County residents in need. Any Montgomery County resident actively experiencing homelessness and eligible for coordinated entry services after February 1st will be assisted by the 211 call center operator to access this new call center for intake.
Right. I mean, the only reason, I mean, that's great. I mean, that's wonderful to hear, but it's a big difference between 211 and then, you know, the 10-digit number straight on the call. So how's that, how's that going to work for people?
I think this idea of a multi-hybrid front door approach, right? So that way, it is not one front door where it is this number and this number only. People can still access and call 211, and then they'll have a warm transfer to the new coordinated entry service. As mentioned previously, our street outreach services that are mobile in the community can also provide intake into the system and coordinated entry services, as well as our shelters as well.
Great. Thank you.
But are you saying, I guess, is the question, should the number be short or easy to remember? Is that what you were getting, getting at?
Well, I think that, I think as they get rolling, that may be, that may be something that will come down the pipe, that they may have their own, you know, short, shorter number, just kind of see how it goes. And they'll see that through call volume and all that. You'll see if there's more calls being directed to the 211 that's not coming this way. And again, I'm just asking questions because it may be something down the road that we have to go back and revisit and say, you know what, the tangent digit number might be not getting out there like we'd hoped, and we may have to try to come up with a, you know, four-digit, whatever it may be. But I think that this, as a, as a starting point, that's a great plan, and I like the transition, and it's still in place, as far as if people do call 211, it still will be handled appropriately. So it's great to hear, and I'm excited to see how it all works out, but we may down the road have to revisit that, that's all.
Good. Now, thank you for coming, and looking forward to learning about the rest of the operation, too.
Great. Thank you. All right. So next up, we have public comment.
First up for a public comment is Sedell Zove.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sedell Zove, and I'm a resident of White Marsh Township. Pleased to meet you in person for the first time. First, I want to offer my congratulations on your historic victory. First, I want to offer my congratulations on your historic victory. I'm here today to address the future of the historic Erie Street Prison. I'm especially pleased that the Planning Commission staff is working with assets and infrastructure in drafting the RFI for the prison, and that there is consideration being given to including the adjacent parcel in that RFI. I respectfully request that you further demonstrate your willingness to take a fresh look at the possibility of an adaptive reuse by doing the following. Accept the offer made by the Preservation Alliance of Greater Philadelphia to review the draft RFI, and that's a pro bono review on the part of the Preservation Alliance. Commit to bringing public funding into the mix to help underwrite a development plan that is right for the site, for Narsetown, and for the county. Immediately reach out to Senator Capoletti and Representative Scott, both of whom are eager to hear from you and poised to bring state funding to the table for the prison's reuse. And in particular, there are two Commonwealth sources that can make a difference here. The Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, commonly referred to as RACB, and the Local Share Account, LSA. Both the senator and the representative will invest their political capital in securing such funding if the three of you, Team Monco, let them know this is a priority. I firmly believe that the right plan for the prison will emerge in response to the RFI if you are willing to offer the prospect of a public-private partnership and make that an integral element of the RFI. RACB funding especially can be quite generous. Existing itemizations, of which tens of millions of dollars already have been committed to the county, can be shifted to a prison reuse project. And if necessary, a new itemization or a line item can be included in the Commonwealth's next capital itemization bill. I will close by saying that I deeply appreciate the vision expressed by each of you in your inaugural comments, one that is based upon accountability and transparency, one that focuses on determination and collaboration, and one that is predicated on dreaming boldly. Thank you each for your vision, your commitment, and your service. And I have a copy of my comments, which I will provide.
I was just going to ask you that. First off, I like the Team Monco. But I was going to ask you if you could provide the list of all the organizations and groups that you've mentioned in your comments. I really appreciate that.
Yes.
I think everyone knows where I stand on the prison. I talked about it during the swearing-in as well, and I think that this is a great opportunity for us to actually work together and see if we could find a good solution to, you know, repurposing and basically saving and repurposing that historic facility.
I appreciate that. Obviously, I share that vision, and I think what, the one takeaway I'd like to leave with you is this notion of a public-private partnership here, and that bringing state dollars to the table will attract the right developer with the right vision that serves all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next up is Olivia Brady.
Good morning, and congratulations on your election victories as the Montgomery County Commissioners. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Olivia Brady. I'm from Narsetown, and I stand before you as an advocate for the Erie Street Prison. The historic prison that stands in our community is more than just bricks and mortar. It is a symbol of our shared history, a testament to the challenges of our predecessors, and a reminder of the strides we have made as a society. Preserving this historic prison is not an act of nostalgia. It is an investment in our community's future. By maintaining and repurposing this landmark, we have the opportunity to create a space that brings our community together and encourages economic development in our county seat. I understand the financial considerations that come with such adventure, and I also understand the financial challenges that you, as the Commissioners, have for our county. However, I urge you to see this not as an expense, but as an investment in the cultural and economic prosperity of the county seat. There is money available, as mentioned, and all it needs is a commitment for the three of you, as a priority, to stay. Our state senator and our state representative will be able to assist in getting funding available, as was mentioned before. They're just waiting for you. In addition, there are federal dollars available as well. The prison stands in the middle of the Central Historic District, which is on the National Register of Historic Places, therefore making it eligible for federal funding. In conclusion, I stand before you as an advocate, not just for bricks and mortar, but as a champion for the community soul. The preservation of our historic prison is an opportunity to showcase our commitment to our past and leave a lasting legacy for future generations. I kindly ask for your support in this endeavor, as together, we can ensure the heart of Montgomery County continues to beat with the rhythm of our shared history. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak today.
Thanks, Olivia.
Thank you.
Up next is Peggy Delasanti.
Hi. You've seen me before. Peggy Delasanti, I'm a resident of the Bridgeport area, but a long time business owner in Narsetown for a long time. Happy New Year to you all, and congratulations to the Commissioners, and I wish you much success during your tenure. Firstly, I'd like to thank Commissioner Linder for her part in shelving the demolition of the Erie Street Prison and also the issuance of the RFI. A special thank you to Commissioner DeBello for publicly including your statement to saving and repurposing the historic Napoleon LeBron Prison in your speech at the swearing-in ceremony recently, and it received a huge applause, if you remember correctly. According to the research that the friends and supporters of the prison did, there is plenty of state and federal funding available for such a project as the prison. Actually, it meets all the requirements for historic preservation and repurposing. The ball is in your court to take the right avenues for the success of the development for the public, for the historic prison and the adjacent parking lot. Please reach out to Senator Capoletti and Representative Greg Scott and ask for their support in securing state funding. They are waiting to hear from you. The state grants should be part of the RFI package to help encourage an inventive use for developers that would basically create a destination, a much-needed anchor for downtown historic district. This is a very unique piece of historic architecture that can be turned into the anchor or destination or both, a drawing card, if you would. As a former retail veteran for 41 years in the 100 block of East Main Street, a business known as Main Change's Clothing, and a native of the Philadelphia Fairmount section, I grew up across the street from the Eastern State Penitentiary. I have the experience of knowing that downtown Narsetown has been lacking an anchor, a destination, for a very, very long time, years, decades. There is, there's a couple of new businesses on the 100 block of East Main Street. One is Five Saints, and the other is El Jeffy. A few million dollars have been invested in these two businesses alone. And there's also other family-owned businesses on that block, but they need help creating foot traffic and a safe environment. They need your help to walk Main Street after five. I wish I could finish. I only had a couple lines left.
You can leave the rest of your public comments with the second.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is David Morgan.
Good morning, Commissioners, and congratulations. I'm David from Ambler. And first of five topics, Monco Mamas, it's a wonderful program which helps Black women with better outcomes in birth, and I'd like you to consider strengthening it. Last I checked, with $17,000, $19,000 allocated to the program, which is less than a salary, to help with financial counseling, relationship counseling, having mothers and fathers working together for a successful birth. Next topic is the homelessness. You probably are aware that the CHO Seat Center was originally in the Norristown Farm Park area, it was closed. So that was mentioned in today's reporter about Lansdale's homelessness. So if you can realize that we, having lost this opportunity, that many churches, thank God, have helped with housing people, and that perhaps some of our facilities could be considered like 18 Erie Street, West Erie Street, which has been empty, yet could maybe be for really working homeless, that could help clean up the streets in Center City, Philadelphia. We have the Center City District, and people are employed, making the streets look really nice with recycling and trash removal, and then going out into the parks to help have employment. Perhaps also with the prison ideas, there could be employment opportunities there, too. Then I have another topic, is the fire department. I suggest a flat fee, rather than forgiveness of the entire real estate tax bill, because there is firefighters who run the fire department, have no car, have no housing that they own, and whereas someone else might get $2,000 taxed if they're just forgiving taxes. So really consider a flat fee to be shared by all the firefighters. Then also, the next topic is, in terms of transparency, I like to see that really in terms of our spending, because there's a large historic project, which probably are very aware of, the county campus plan, and hundreds of millions of dollars are affected compared to Monco Mamas' $19,000. So the priority, as I mentioned in my letter to the Enquirer, Philadelphia Enquirer, on December 26th, I'm interested in seeing the initiative of helping out people more than so many hundreds of millions on this project. I know there's a frittered glass component of the project description. Maybe we should consider this frittered glass something that's worthwhile architecturally, or we could maybe cut some costs there. My last point is to make us tax-friendly, Montgomery County, because my letter to the Enquirer mentions that we've had 5% tax hike, then we had 8%, then we had 8%, then we just had 12.913. So that's a high rate of acceleration in taxation. I just read also that Bucks County had no tax increase from 2020 on, and they are trying to have no tax increase until 2030.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Welcome.
Up next is Doug Seiler.
I don't have a prepared comment, but I do want to just say a few things. First of all, welcome. Nice to have a woman at the helm, Mr. McKeja, is that how you pronounce it?
That's right.
Great to hear. I liked your comment the other day about considering the Narsetown Dam for hydropower. If you check the file on that, it's something I've been talking to the Planning Commission for years about. There was an RFI on it a number of years ago. It's an interesting idea. I did bring a microgrid specialist to Narsetown maybe five years ago to discuss the idea that the downtown and particularly the county's campuses could be that for resiliency. It's a smart idea. Mr. DeBello, nice to see you here. You all know, sorry, I just walked up the stairs. I'm always out of breath.
You walked up the stairs, or you took the elevator?
I did take the elevator, but I meant to take the stairs. Good. Good. So I just would like to say one thing before I run out of time. I do really think, from being part of this fall's effort to try to bring to the public's attention the importance of the Narsetown Prison and how it can be an economic revitalization tool for really the county seat, I honestly believe that. I brought my firm here literally 25 years ago. Could have put it anywhere. I said Narsetown's cool, it's urban, I don't know anything about it, but it's got potential. And I really have been here ever since fighting for that potential, and I hope you all will, from what I hear, I was really inspired by the tone and kind of the way you all spoke at the, whatever you called that, convocation ceremony, and I'm really optimistic and hoping that you all will pull together on all the issues. I know there's many. But the one thing I do want to say is, I think it's obvious, three minutes really isn't enough for public comments. It takes a lot for public to come here. It's not my new hobby. You won't see me very often, but I just learned from watching this fall, five minutes seems reasonable. I don't know the language of it. It's like probably something like a reasonable amount of time. Three just seems to have been kind of just, it sends the wrong tone. It sends a non, a non-welcoming tone, I think, to the public. It takes a lot for the public to come here, interrupts our days, and, but that's all I really have to say. Welcome aboard, looking forward to it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug, for being here.
Up next, we have Adrian Seltzer, who is on Zoom.
Hello.
Hi, go ahead, we can hear you.
All right. Do you need to see me?
No, we don't need to.
It doesn't show anything on here to do that. In any case, I want to welcome the Commissioners in their, in their new and continuing positions. I wanted to say, I did this on Zoom today. To be able to do this on Zoom, you need to have a Zoom account and sign in through Zoom also, and I think that might be a burden for some people who can't get there. So that's one thing. I also, I also am thrilled at the tone of the Commissioners and how it is one of working together, and I really want to thank you for that. That three minutes to discuss something can be enough. Five minutes, if I'm talking like this, three minutes isn't a lot. If I'm able to speak and read something, three minutes might be good, but I know for many people, it is not, because they're either not, just talking in public. So awaiting the first Better Services Meeting, and I thank you, and that's it.
Thank you, Adrian, for your comments. That is all for public comments. Thank you all for being here and offering your comments. So next, I'd like to move to the approval of the minutes for the December 14th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, and the January 2nd, 2024 Board Reorganization meeting. So I'd like to put it in a form of a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 14th, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting and the January 2nd, 2024 Board Reorganization meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKeja. Any more comments? Any negative votes? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to move to resolutions. I'd like to invite Scott France to come up and talk about the authorization of planning assistance contracts for Ambler Borough, Lower Southford, Lower Potsgrove, West Potsgrove, and Perkyomen Townships.
You got them. Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners, welcome. I look forward to working with you on all the, some of the great projects we've even heard about already and many to come. And I also want to make a quick special thank you for the acknowledgements expressed towards Charlie Turner. He was just a giant to the Planning Commission since 1966, and this week has been really bittersweet, solemn in his passing, but celebratory in the life he lived and the impact he had, and I want to thank you for recognizing that. Our business, my business today for this agenda item relates to our Community Planning Assistance Contract Program, and this is where we offer our planning services as a direct consultant contract relationship with municipalities that are interested in taking us up. We have 34 municipalities who do have contracts with the county and four regional planning groups as well. And this program has been tremendously successful, one of the flagstone programs of the Planning Commission, and is really a win-win situation in that it offers our services, our expertise, our local knowledge, in the room when decisions- our local knowledge in the room when decisions are being made, when issues are being discussed at the local level, which is, there's really no other way to get that level of input and access. On the flip side, we share in the cost of these services with our municipalities as detailed in these contracts. So the resolution before you today, as you identified the five municipalities, I'm just going to give a quick rundown, and this will give you a sense of some of the work that we do with them. The work program for Perkyomen Township involves the township's subdivision and land development ordinance, revising their open space plan, and assisting the stormwater basin retrofits and stream bank stabilization efforts. That contract is a total, and these are all three-year contracts, I clarify, from January of two thousand twenty-four through December of two thousand twenty-six. The Perkyomen contract is a total cost of eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars with the municipal contribution of forty thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. The next community is West Pots Grove Township. Their work will involve zoning ordinance updates, a West High Street streetscape study, and grant writing assistance. And that contract is a total cost of forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars with municipal share of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The next one is Lower Pots Grove, and this will involve general flexible assistance with a focus on master planning for township parks. That total cost is forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars with municipal share of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Moving to Lower Southford Township, their contract involves selective zoning ordinance updates, planning and GIS support to the township's trail and sidewalk committee, and flexible assistance to the township's Planning Commission. That contract is for sixty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty dollars with municipal share of thirty-four thousand one hundred and ten dollars. And then finally, Ambler Borough will include ongoing zoning and subdivision and land development ordinance revisions, and also we are embarking on the development of a new comprehensive plan update for Ambler Borough, which is one of the biggest projects that we do with municipalities and always have a handful going at one time, and really tremendous opportunities to be out there with the community, helping inform and learning and working on both county and local policies to be consistent. So with Ambler, that total cost is eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars with municipal share of forty thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. And that is the resolution.
Great, thank you. I'd like to get a motion on the table that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approves the contracts for municipal planning assistance as outlined by Mr. Scott France, and that the county, the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Makija. Is there any board comment?
I think it's just important to point out that when you talk about the municipal, we're subsidizing the cost through the municipalities for all good reasons. It's forming strong relationships and helping with the overall planning. But I think it's also important, because when we talk about the contract, then you say it's the municipal, what portion they're paying. I'm not sure if people understand what you're really saying with that, so I wanted to be clear. But the good news is that all our, all our county costs are being covered by what the municipality is paying for our services. Is that, that's correct, right?
The county costs, in the, in the cost-sharing agreement, so that fifty percent is what we ask for them, them to cover, and they, they cover that. We make sure that it comes out a little above, we, we don't want to fall under.
Right.
But we do cover what we state in that. But we are, you know, you say subsidizing, we are doing the work on behalf of them. So to be accurate, it would be a cost share.
Well, and that's, that's a good way of saying it as well. So, but it's, it's a great relationship, and it's, you know, that we're providing those services, working with these communities. But I just wanted to make sure that it's, it's clear within, within your presentation what, what you're actually saying, so people understood that. So thank you.
Any other comment? Okay, moving on to a vote. Do we have any negative votes? All right, motion carries. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're going to stay here.
Yep.
So next, we'll move on to the authorization of short-term planning assistance contract for Upper Marion School District Enrollment Projection Study.
Yes, this is a shorter one, and it involves only one entity. We also do short-term contracts, and this particular program is for school district enrollments projection studies. This will be our thirty-fifth, thirty-sixth, starting to lose count. Since this program started, great opportunity for us to use our, our knowledge, our data, understanding of what's happening in these communities, using the school district's data as well, look at how their enrollment has fluctuated in recent years, and how those trends are, are expected to influence their enrollments going forward. So with each of these studies, it results in the key deliverable of a ten-year projection model, which that they can use to look at their facilities' planning and also identify what are the causes and what, what might be important to them as they plan towards their future needs. With Upper Marion Area School District, and we'll be looking, like any study, we'll be looking at demographic trends, birth patterns, housing construction, housing sales activity, and other trends. This contract runs from January to May of two thousand twenty-four as a short-term contract, and in this case, the cost share, there is a cost share of seventy-five percent for the school district, twenty-five percent of the county. So the full cost of this report is twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars with the district share of nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And that is also in resolution for you.
Great, thank you. I'd like to get a motion on the table that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to approve a short-term contract for community planning assistance as outlined by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Makija. Any board comments? Hearing none, moving to a vote. Any negative votes? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Commitment of Funds for the Farmland Preservation Program. I'd like to invite Hannah, our Planning Manager, to go over that item with us.
Good morning, commissioners. A brief background on our County Farmland Preservation Program. Next slide. So we have been preserving farms in Montgomery County since nineteen ninety, and at this point, we have preserved one hundred eighty-six farms and almost ten thousand five hundred acres. We use a combination of state, county, and local funds to achieve this, but it's important to note that this is a voluntary program. We, we use these funds to, to work with local landowners to purchase development rights on their properties. This allows us to preserve these farms in perpetuity. They are restricted by these easement purchases to be farmed. So we are, we're helping people preserve not just their families' properties and their, their histories on these farms, but also a rural way of life in a lot of these communities. Next slide. So you can see here the, the scope of this work. The star is on top of Norristown, but the vast majority of our preserved farms are in the western end of the state. In two thousand twenty-three, we made offers to and went to sentiment on a handful of additional farms. And next slide. What I'm here today to, to discuss is the, the resolution that's before you, which is required by the state. We have to certify the county funds that we are putting towards this program each year. This allows us to get a match from the state. In two thousand twenty-three, we certified one point three million dollars, which then leveraged two point eight additional, two point eight million additional dollars for this program. In two thousand twenty-four, we are asking you to certify one million one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars to put towards this program. These are funds that were approved in the budget for this year already. And of those funds, four thousand dollars are being reserved to use on the annual inspection of the properties that we do. I ask to, for you to approve the resolution that's before you today.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby commit the sum of one million one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars for farmland preservation used during the year two thousand twenty-four, to be placed in a restricted account for such purposes, and that four thousand dollars of such funds be allocated to the Montgomery County Conservation District, with the statutorily required annual inspections of each preserved farm, with the remainder of the funds to be used for the purchase of agricultural preservation easements. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? I'd just like to say, I've taken some time to get to know this program, you walk me through it, and it's, it's super impressive, the work that you, you and the team are, are doing to partner with our area farmers to preserve, preserve farmland. So, so thank you for that continued work.
Thank you.
I was just going to say this. I went to the event, I said, I know you did. I went to the event last year, one of the, one of the events that they had up in Upper Southford, I believe it was.
Yes, yes.
And that was actually, it was very impressive, and so I'm excited to be able to support this moving forward. Do you have, not to give specifics of locations, but do you, are there farms already projected that you guys are looking at trying to move forward preserving this year?
Our annual application cycle closes on February first, and most people wait until the last second to apply.
Of course.
It's hard to say who we'll be working with, but, you know, we, you know, we try to do the math. We, we have to rank and score each applicant compared to all of the rest of the applicants, those who might be on our waitlist from prior years and the new ones, and we make as many offers as we can.
Hopefully, we get one this, this year that we can all go up there and, you know, congratulate everyone involved with getting that, preserving that property. So I look forward to, look forward to hearing that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything on there? Great. All right. Do we move to a vote? Do we have any negative votes? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Maureen Holder up for the approval of authorized county signatories.
Thank you. Before you, as a resolution, designating authorized county signatories who may enter into contracts and other agreements on behalf of the county of Montgomery. The Pennsylvania County Code authorizes the county commissioners to enter into agreements on behalf of the county. In addition, the county commissioners may designate authorized county officials to act on their behalf and to enter into agreements that have been approved by the commissioners by resolution, ordinance, or other legal authority. By adopting this resolution, the county representatives in the attached exhibit will be vested with the authority to act as signatories for all lawful and properly authorized county business. And you will probably see the exhibit come around and your signature will be, we will be asking for your signature.
Great, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion that in accordance with the authority conferred by law, the individuals holding the below-listed titles, offices, or positions within the county of Montgomery County are designated as authorized representatives of the county of Montgomery and are to be considered the proper county officials for the purposes of executing all manner of documents and performing all actions in connection with those items which have been duly authorized by the county commissioners via resolution, ordinance, or other legally permissible means. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I don't, I don't know who was first.
It doesn't matter.
I'll give it to Commissioner Makija.
No worries.
Any comment? Any negative votes? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
That was an easy one. All right, I'd like to invite our Chief Human Resources Officer, Catherine Halen, to review the personnel list.
Good morning, commissioners. You should have in front of you a final copy of the Commissioners Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated January tenth, two thousand twenty-four, with a timestamp of six fifty a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four personnel presentation as given by Chief Human Resource Officer Catherine Halen, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next, advertisements of bids and RFPs that have been published publicly on our website. I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached exhibit A, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Hearing none, any negative votes? Motion carries. Next up, we're going to go to awards of contract. Motion to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals for Montgomery County on attached exhibit B, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Makija. Any board comments? Any negative votes? Motion carries. All right, next, awards of contracts, Southeast PA Regional Task Force, Exhibit C. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C, and to authorize, authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Any negative votes? Motion carries. Did I miss anything? Let's make sure. Just lots of, okay, all right, just verifying. All right, any closing commissioner comments? Commissioner Makija, anything on your end?
Seemed like a, seemed like a well-executed, uneventful. No, I just, thank you, everyone, again. If, if you reached out to me in the last week or two, I may not have read it yet because I just got access to my email. So I just want to let everyone know that we are following up, setting up a number of meetings, just introductory. So if you haven't heard from us, feel free to reach out. I also want to introduce my executive administrator, Rebecca Terrell, who is fantastic and I've worked with for some time. So thank you all, and we look forward to the next meeting.
Great. Anything on your end?
That's a great idea. I want to introduce Kim Henderson, who's my executive assistant. So if anybody needs to get in touch with me, if you don't get in touch with me, she's there. So reach out to us, we're, we're eager to hear from you. Two things real quick. I also, I forgot to mention up at the beginning of the, I actually knew Charlie Turnett, I met him like over twenty years ago when I was a supervisor. He was, he was an awesome guy. I mean, the, the work that he did for, for Montgomery County and the community was, was amazing. He was an advocate for everything that occurred throughout the administration. I know he's going to be missed by many, but his, his life achievements is just unbelievable. So I just want to, you know, recognize him as well. And last thing I want to throw out there is that I know we're going to get, we're getting a lot of updates with a lot of projects in the county going on. I think it would be really good for one of our future meetings, near-future meetings, to have a, a project update on a justice center, do a project overview, expected end date, year-to-date total spend, you know, all, all the fun stuff that goes along with that. So I think it would be good for, because it comes up in a lot of comments, and I think it would be great for us to, I mean, we'll, we get a place behind the scenes as far as where things are at. I think that would be a great agenda item in, in the near future as well. So thank you very much. I think it was a great first meeting, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
So, and I think that you'll see that we're going to have a little levity towards our meetings as well, so that's a good thing. So thank you very much.
You took the words out of my mouth. So I recognize that as a county, we have to, we're overseeing the tough stuff. Right. And that doesn't mean we, we can't have a little fun, that, you know, I was, I was saying to Commissioner Lawrence, I wanted to bring The Bachelor, the new Bachelor. Does anybody watch The Bachelor?
Can't say that from my watch list.
He's from Montgomery County, right? He's from Montgomery County. I wanted to bring him to our commissioners' meeting. So, but in all seriousness, look, we, you know, this is a place where people bring issues forward, we talk about tough stuff, but we also can have some fun. And so thank you all for coming to today's meeting. I think it went well, not just because I'm leading it, but because, you know, I have the, the two of you. And I have to, I guess I have to introduce my executive administrator. I feel terrible, I've never done that before, but I can't leave her out. But Raya Fernandez is my executive administrator, and this, these are the three folks that will keep us well-organized and make sure that we're responding to constituent's needs, that we're getting out and doing what we need to do as commissioners. So thanks to the three of you, and look forward to working with you. So with that, I'm going to announce some upcoming meeting dates. We have the Election Board immediately following this meeting. The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. And so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, adjourn the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Any negative votes? All right, motion carries, meeting adjourned. So I'd like to invite Commissioners, not Commissioner Controller, Controller Sanchez up for Salary Board.
Morning.
All right, do we have anyone signed up for public comment for Salary Board? All right, do we have anyone signed up for public comments for Salary Board? Okay.
So first up is David Morgan.
Hello, I'm commenting about the commissioner salaries and I understand that you have had a raise already from last year given to you. And I just want to mention that this is a large job with the tax-friendly aspects of things because the twenty forty plan, twenty fifty plan, I believe too, are concentrating on the importance of retention of, of employers in our area. And so your job as commissioners hopefully is full-time. I'm not sure if you have part-time, if you want to disclose anything like that. But it's just really day one importance because of the tax increases I've mentioned. And I did have an inaccuracy because of time. I said Bucks County had zero from twenty twenty, but now they did have a six percent. But then they tend to have no more until twenty-three. So that's ten years, but six percent. It's like point six-two per year. So as a goal, I'll put that out there that if your dedication as commissioners can really work on this issue so that we are friendly to employers staying here and helping everybody with the tax burden we have to face, I think it'd just be really great. If anything I can do to offer insights, I mentioned Erie Street, if it's going to be an office building instead of homeless, whatever it is, I can help.
Your public comment here has to be related to Salary Board.
Okay, so I don't want to get into the homeless right now then.
Yeah.
I understand your point. So anyway, just, I just encouraged you that on that. And I'm sorry that I couldn't squeeze that point in about the six percent in Bucks County. That happens sometimes. And thank you for your comment about needing more time. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Morgan. Any other public comments?
That is all for public.
Right, I'd like to invite our Chief Human Resource Officer Catherine Halen up to review the Salary Board list.
Good morning, Salary Board members. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated January tenth, twenty twenty-four with a timestamp of six fifty a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
Great. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the January eleventh, twenty twenty-four Salary Board presentation as given by Chief Human Resource Officer Catherine Halen and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Any negative votes? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Retiree acknowledgement. Tom Bonner.
Good morning, Salary Board Commissioners. I am here this morning to speak against her will about Barbara O'Malley. The countywide response to Barbara O'Malley's email announcing her retirement from Montgomery County and her continuation of her own parallel career in public service was swift and stunningly similar. In the name of decorum, I won't portray all of the exclamation points, but I'm going to excerpt some quotes. No, I am sad. I am so sad. I am sorry. I pick my heart up off the floor. The one thing you can do is change your plans. Aw, man. So sad. And just sort of as a summary, no. What else could we have expected for someone like Barbara? A person who truly came up through the county. Exemplifying dedication to its residents and to her colleagues at every turn. Barbara worked as an information management specialist in the Department of Health, beginning in nineteen ninety-seven, twenty-six years ago. Conducting data analysis in the fledgling age of the internet. Leave that there. Her talents moved her up through the Department of Health and Human Services, project director, community health facilitator, cabinet coordinator, director of aging and adult services. She became the Director of Health and Human Services in twenty sixteen and ushered through a complex restructuring, informed all the while by her experiences on the front lines, having been managed, having worked to our, to serve our county residents, and thus being uniquely positioned to understand what works and what doesn't. She became Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Operating Officer and my boss in twenty eighteen and brought a perspective to the management team that remains unprecedented. At that point, she had held county jobs for twenty-one years, from entry level on up, had worked across multiple administrations of all political persuasions, and had rebuilt a department, as I said, with the dedicated team at the Department of Health and Human Services to better serve our residents. Sure, her personality, her attitude, her drive, all exceptional. But the heartbreak from our colleagues that came through in those personal notes, from our colleagues, from myself, from Lee and everyone else, is a credit to the attention she brought to everything she did here to always, first and foremost, our staff and the public. She knew everyone and everything because she had worked through the ranks and it showed every day. For example, in the aftermath of Hurricane Ida, it was Barbara who coordinated direct services to displaced residents, orchestrating across our CFO, our Office of Housing and Community Development, our Department of Public Safety. She was in every shelter we set up every night. She made sure they were working. And when they weren't, she let people know and fixed it. This is a theme of Barbara's career, you might note. She put systems together. She whipped all of us up to make sure hotels were taken care of. She knew that we knew who was there, that we had the info collected that we would need for the federal government. So sure, at some point, that's her job, big deal. Except then she was in the hotel every night, making sure families and individuals had the advocacy and resources they needed. She met people in lobbies, on the street, in her office. Similarly, during COVID, she was here in this building alone almost every day, overseeing the buildings and the security teams and the custodians and the building services staff that couldn't not be here. Those person-to-person interactions informed her work, guiding decisions and recommendations and directions that she would give. It was Barbara who submitted the compensation study project through the recovery plan process, noting in her submission what the pandemic did to county staff, how staff and their families were impacted, and what needed to be done. And we, when we started the effort, she was standing next to me and our teams with a stopwatch and some snacks to make sure, damn sure, that it got done right. On the snacks note, the food is a whole thing. As evinced in the comments from our county staff, she truly loves this county and its people. She seemed oddly enthusiastic about making sure we were all at a healthy weight. She treated our offices to lunch in numerous times. She planned office get-togethers. She bought the ribbons for the holiday decorations. She implemented office cooking contests that she was happy to be a loser in. I'll note here, weird coincidence, that she retired with the rotating Stanley Cup-style culinary trophy on her desk, having won the last contest, giving new meaning to the George Costanza adage of going out on top. She randomly treated our building services teams to lunch out. She pushed the storied Health and Human Services staff events, always replete with food, to new levels. She made a point to eat at Norristown Restaurants, a trait of hers I was personally grateful to be a beneficiary of plenty of times. Continuing that personal note, I had the immeasurably good fortune to work directly for and with Barbara for the past six years. And I will never be able to repay the benefits I gleaned learning, pushing, and achieving with her. She and I built the recovery office and the plan together, her idea. She and I had plenty of very long days with the compensation study. One particular note I will never forget during the twenty twenty election, when I'm in the mail-in room with Frank Dean and Jane Stein and a hundred other people, and it's something like three in the morning, and Barbara is with our voter services team here at OMP, count, processing poll books, the last step towards being able to count all of the two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-plus ballots we processed in those forty hours. She took an exhausted team of public service that were languishing and gave a fight, fight, fight speech that lit a fire under everyone. I can't imagine people don't still remember this that heard it. She called us in the other building up at HSC every few minutes, barking updates, and the gas stayed pressed to the floor. In that moment, I'm sorry. It's dark. This is the thick of COVID. We're all wearing masks. And no one has sat down for an entire day. I swear I got through this okay. Here's what I noted. Barbara made it fun for everybody. Hard work, enjoyable for the benefit of the public, something that she did every day. Okay. She and I argued a lot constructively. Lee has a testimony to that. He could hear through the walls many, many times. And again, neither of us would have had it any other way. I treasure that type of work relationship, and I would imagine she does too. The comfort to flesh things out, and we often reconciled how we just wanted to convince each other that we were right. I'm embarrassed and displeased to report that my actually correct column has truthfully many less tally marks than hers. But here's another one. As I mentioned, I am here today speaking against her will. I'll credit Lee. He listened to her weirdly explicit instructions that she wanted no notes, save those personal ones that poured forth from her colleagues. I'll take that loss because Barbara was and is too important to the county to not at least embarrass her a little. She retires, having indelibly improved Montgomery County on small and large scales, and does something in keeping with her impressive record. She is now the Executive Director of Delaware County, a position she is uniquely qualified to hold. We all, picking our hearts up off the floor, can't wait to see how she changes the world again.
You've got me misty-eyed over, over here.
And I swear I'm.
That's okay. But that's just a testament to who Barbara was. And I only had the opportunity to work with Barbara for the last year, but I'll tell you, there were so many occasions when especially, you know, being a new commissioner, running in a crazy primary, getting criticism left and right, where she was steady, she was supportive, she was kind. I can't tell you how many thoughtful words of encouragement she gave me as a woman, acknowledged, you know, some of the racism that I, that I felt. And she didn't have to do any of that. But she took time to make sure that I had everything that I needed in order to be successful. So I'm better for knowing Barbara. The county is better for having her as a leader. And I know she's going to do great things in Delaware County. So any other comments?
No, unfortunately, I haven't had the chance to work with her. I did hear a lot of good things, you know, last year regarding Barbara. And it was like, oh, wait till, you know, when you win, you're going to love working with Barbara. And here's, you know, unfortunately, she, you know, is moving on. But we wish her, I wish her well. I think we all wish her well and success in her next chapter in her life. And I'm sure she'll be greatly missed by, by many throughout the, throughout the county.
Thank you, Tom. I was also getting a little misty-eyed, and my reactions weren't as clean as the ones you described when I got the email that Barbara was leaving. I, I will just have to add, and you did a wonderful job explaining some of the situations in which we all worked with Barbara. But I will just have to add, there were so many times over the years where I called Barbara up with, and I started something with like, okay, we have this problem, but, and she was either already on it or totally on board. Because the one thing Barbara always did was make sure her values were, were used every day when she came to work here. And so if there was something that needed to be done, like when Hurricane Ida hit, and she knew people needed help, and she was going to make sure we had a conversation about financing that helped to make sure people in this county got what they needed in a timely fashion. And like you said, she, I know with Hurricane Ida especially, she was in those hotel rooms. She was meeting with those people. She was finding out what the latest and most urgent needs were. And she was coming back to the county, physically coming back to the county and making sure she talked to the people in the county that needed to get that done. And just time and time again with, like you said, with, with employees and their compensation, working with her and working through finances every time, she just made sure we remembered our values here when we were making decisions and that. And, and as I told her, Delaware County is so lucky to have her. And, you know, it's our loss and their gain. But it's just been wonderful working with her. So thank you for getting up here and going against her wishes and speaking and telling everybody here in the county and those who haven't met her how, how, what an indelible mark she, she's leaving on Montgomery County. So thank you.
Yes, no, thank you for your touching remarks. And I was very much looking forward to working with Barbara. And I've met with her a few times and at various county events. And my reaction was similar to the ones that you got in those emails. And this does color my relationship with our colleagues in Delco. But hopefully it will only improve our ability to collaborate with them, having her there. So I'm really looking forward to that.
Great, great. Before we adjourn, I just would like to welcome our new Register of Wills, Tina Lawson, to the boardroom. So it's, it's official. So congratulations to you. We look forward to working with you. So next I'll make a motion to adjourn the January eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Any negative votes? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
That's who I am. Depends on what you need, I guess.
So welcome, everyone. Calling to order the January eleventh meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Elections. Start with just a welcome and our board comments. This is a big year ahead of us. A presidential election. We hope to see historic turnout as we did in the last. I think this is an issue that came up for a number of us in the last year when we ran. We recognize that while voting, the administration of elections should be a nonpartisan issue, should be non-political. It has been hotly contested in recent years. Our role overseeing the elections is to make sure that this is a truly transparent, trusted process that also enfranchises and enables every citizen of the, of the county to exercise their fundamental right to vote. So we're going to hear from our Director of Elections in just a moment. But I'm going to turn over to our fellow commissioners for any board comment.
Just real quick, I think that, I think you're right. I mean, this is an issue that we've probably all heard, you know, throughout our, our endeavors last year as we're out campaigning and talking to the community. I know that I was asked a lot of questions and a lot of things were lifted up and pointed out. And my goal as a, you know, commissioner now is to, to really understand and look into the processes and procedures. Because, and I think, you know, when I talked about this, I mentioned that at one time before we were sworn in. So, you know, there's no issues. But, you know, my goal is to, you know, when it comes time to certify, especially this year, it's going to be such a big election with a presidential election, that my goal is when I stand in front of everyone to say I've certified this election, I'm going to do it with confidence because I was able to experience and, and see the processes and procedures and stand in front of the community and say, you know, these things I saw, these things I investigated, these things, these are recommendations I made for improvement, whatever it may be. But that ultimately is going to be my goal for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to an approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the December fourth, twenty twenty-three minutes, the Montgomery County Election Board. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So any board comment? Any negative votes? Motion passes. Answers approved. And then I'm going to bring up Frank Dean, who's our new Director of Elections, and I just want to congratulate him on that role. It's really exciting and comforting to have Frank in this role. He's been someone who's been running the mail-in vote program for our elections in the recent cycle. And has been in the office a number of years through many different issues that he has helped tackle. And we're really confident in his ability to help execute a big election this year. And we're really confident in his ability to help execute a big election this year. So thank you, Frank.
Thank you very much. It's my absolute pleasure. Me and you are, I hope that I can just keep our success free rolling and keep delivering excellent elections to the voters of Montgomery County. With that in mind, good morning, Election Board. Today, we are coming together to appoint all of the necessary personnel that will help be assisting us on the North Penn Special Election, which you referred to the Board of Commissions meeting. In the back of the room here are the list of those personnel. The first are the appointment of temporary poll workers. Section 2675 of the Election Code permits the Board of Elections to temporarily appoint qualified individuals to fill any vacancies occurring at any time in the five days preceding an election. There is a list attached to your agenda entitled 2024 North Penn Special Election Poll Worker Appointments. We are requesting that the Board move to approve the individuals on this list to serve in the named election districts and the named positions for the 2024 North Penn Special Election and for that election only.
So I will make a motion that the people whose names are set forth on the attached document titled Poll Worker Appointments for the 2024 North Penn Special Election as non-elected poll workers are designated to serve as members of the various local boards of elections throughout Montgomery County for the date of the 2024 North Penn Special Election only. Do I have a second?
I'll second thought.
Is there any board comment? Any negative votes? Okay. The motion passes. Second, we move to the appointment of Canvas Provisional and Tabulation Board members. Do you want to go ahead?
Section 3050 of the Election Code states that in the days following the election, the Board of Elections shall examine the provisional ballot envelopes to determine if the individual voting the provisional ballot is entitled to have that ballot counted. Section 3146.8 of the Election Code states that the Board of Elections is to conduct the pre-canvas and canvass of votes cast via mail-in and absentee ballots. And the Election Board is given authority to appoint qualified individuals to serve as election tabulators by the Pennsylvania Election Code. There is a list attached to your agenda entitled 2024 North Penn Special Election Canvas Provisional and Tabulation Board Appointments. We are requesting that the Board move to approve the individuals on this list to serve in their separate capacities for the 2024 North Penn Special Election and for that election only.
So I'm going to make a motion to appoint the names set forth on the attached document titled Canvas Provisional and Tabulation Board Appointments for the 2024 North Penn Special Election to work as members of the mail-in and absentee ballot canvas board, provisional board, and tabulation board to assist in the computation of the North Penn Special Election held on January 16th, 2024. Do I have a second?
I can second thought.
Is there any board comment? Any negative votes? Motion passes. And we'll move on to the appointment of delivery support personnel for the 2024 election cycle. Go ahead.
The code gives the Board the authority to delegate the responsibilities for representatives authorized to act on the Board's behalf. You've been provided a document titled the 2024 North Penn Special Election Delivery Support Personnel. And I am requesting that the Board vote to approve the people named on that list to serve as delivery personnel for election-related materials for the 2024 election cycle.
So I'll make a motion to appoint the individuals so named in the attached document, 2024 Election Ballot Delivery Support Personnel to assist in the delivery of election materials to election officials. Is there a second? Any board comment? Any negative votes? The motion passes. For any closing comments?
No. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks. Well, I just want to thank all of the individuals we just appointed to be poll workers, delivery support personnel, and part of the Canvas Provisional and Tabulation Board. It's really important work. It is the foundation of what we do to give our citizens the confidence in the election process. And please extend our thanks to them. And other than that, any other comments?
I'm just thinking, I'm not sure if it was pointed out before, but I think it's important to point out that the special election being held up in North Penn is being completely covered by the North Penn, I guess, school. So all expenses incurred by the county are being paid for by people up in North Penn.
That's great.
And I just want to congratulate you on your new role and, you know, thank you for stepping in to be the interim person. But glad to see you at the helm and look forward to all the great things that you'll do.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to it as well.
All right. So we'll motion to adjourn the January 11th, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Elections. Is there a second? Any negative votes? Okay. Please adjourn.